Okay, we've called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 18th, 2022. I would ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, as we are gathered, we are ever mindful that we live in a very troubling world with wars taking place and with numerous acts of violence taking place, crime being committed. We just ask for direction and understanding and stern actions that will allow us to retain and regain and hold on to the great American ideals that many of us have so longly held so high. Tonight also, we want to ask for direction and understanding and blessings on the city council for the decisions they are about to make tonight, knowing that in the hearts and minds of each and every one of these men and women, they are here to do what is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and that we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Also, tonight, we want to ask for a special blessing upon all those from our community who are sick or infirmed, and we just ask that the world be a brighter and happier and grander and healthier place as we move forward into the coming months. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Millay, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Risotto.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Janzett.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah. Barron.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
Eleven of fourteen.
So eleven present, fourteen three, there's three absent.
Three absent.
We do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. So, moving forward, I am, by the agenda, I am asked to remind everyone to speak directly into the microphones if you're going to address the city council tonight specifically from the podium. This is being broadcast and will be televised on BATV, so we want to make sure that everybody that's using the microphone during the process proceedings of the meeting can be heard. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed in our tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the council have anything they wish to add or change or remove? Very good. Moving then to item number four, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. And Alderman Beck, I guess you get to do that.
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place and file the Committee of the Hole Minutes from February 1st, 2022, and February 8th, 2022; Historic Preservation Commission Minutes from February 14th, 2022, and March 14th, 2022; and the Building Reports from March 2022; and for approval, the April 15th, 2021, could that be 2022? Payroll for $927,925.50; accounts payable, check register, in the amount of $3,222,101.41; and the city council minutes for April 4th, 2022; and for approval, the Cow Executive Session Minutes from January 25th, 2022, on personnel and collective bargaining; and the Cow Executive Session Minutes from February 1st, 2022, setting the price of land for sale and personnel; and Ordinance 22-20 amending Ordinance 20-39 to eliminate a reversion clause for the southwest corner of Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road. Your honor, I would move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, Miller.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Miller, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any further discussion, additions? Now to Kirk, please call the roll.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Consent agenda is approved, eleven yes, three absent. Moving then to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody tonight which has addressed this for something that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving to item number eight, which is public hearing for establishing a special service area, that's number 67, for the Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision at Wind Energy Pass and Kirk Road. Do we have somebody to lead that?
We just need to open the public hearing.
Just going to open a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody wish to address us about it then?
I can.
Come on up and give us your name and address, please, for the record and...
Hello, everybody. John Ross, 1229 Wind Energy Pass.
Craig Marsky, 1235 Wind Energy Pass.
We're just seeking some more information about this, about this agenda item. Is there anybody here that could answer a few questions for us?
Sure, yeah, I can answer questions. This is a, just for background, this is a backup special service area. This would not have any levy attached to it. It is meant to be only activated if the association does not maintain the common areas within the development. This was originally required as part of the annexation agreement for this property. The developer did not do that work, unfortunately, in a timely manner, so we were basically just going back and establishing this SSA that was required as part of the annexation agreement. In addition, this is the one unit within Kirkland Chase that does not have a special service area. All the rest of them do have backup special service areas. It is our intention not to implement a levy. We hope that the association will continue to maintain the properties, and the only way we would implement this is if there is a lack of maintenance by the association on the common areas for this. So I can answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. The first question that we had is, in the letter that was sent out, there's, it was indicated that it was 50 cents per $100 of assessed value, which by our calculations, average expected value of the homes is about 2,500 per year. We're seeking more information about how that number was, you know, gathered or where that number came from.
Yeah, the 50 cents per 100 is a pretty standard number for special service areas. That's the maximum that we could ever levy. We can only by law levy what we've actually expenditure, our actual expenditures on a special service area. So while it's 50 cents, and if it was only, say, $3,000 worth of mowing, we can only levy whatever the actual maintenance costs were for that, for that area. So that's just the maximum, and again, you know, we hope we never have to implement this, but if we do, that will be the absolute maximum we could levy under the requirements.
Thank you. Are there, are there any future plans to in any way develop commercially or residentially that would impact the detention area?
No, because that's, that's owned by the homeowners association, the two detention areas are owned by the association, so they would have control over that. There are detention easements over that as well, so you cannot use it for any other purpose other than just detention.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but those actually two detention ponds that you're referring to are not part of the Single Family Homeowners Association. Those are maintained by those townhomes along Wagner Road.
Right.
The Single Family Homeowners Association, those, those fees go to, there's another townhome association that, where the fountain is part of. That's where our maintenance fees go towards. So what's kind of unfair to the nine single homes is if the Town Homeowners Association, which we have zero part of, if that fails, then we're on the hook both for the detention ponds as well as what we normally pay for a regular, a regular Single Family Homeowners Association. So that really doesn't seem fair to us, that we're responsible for something that we absolutely have zero control over.
Right. Well, the, the two things that come into play with that is, one, is that the, the detention ponds here are tributary to this subdivision unit only. So the drainage for these ponds is coming from Unit 3, which includes the single family homes. So, you know, however the associations were set up, that is kind of separate from what this is, and, and, you know, that would be something that you would have to talk to your homeowners association about, about what's fair and what's, you know, what's happening. And that's, that's something that's kind of a, you know, a private issue that we have not been involved in, we don't get in the middle of homeowners association issues. But again, you know, we hope we never have to implement this, and this would be a backup special service area, and that, you know, we'd never have to do it. We, we only have, I think, two act, well, three active special service areas within the community, and we have several dozen of these that are in place.
So who, when the, the developer created the homeowners association, because they really did it in a squirrely way, there's actually three associations plus the townhomes that you're referring to that these, that are responsible for maintaining detention ponds. Who approved how the builder set that up? Is that approved by the city?
No, we don't, we don't approve any of the homeowners associations or how they're set up. That's, that's between, that's, that's purely established by the developer and how they want to manage that. We don't get in the middle of any of those association creations or management.
Okay, so essentially, you're saying that the nine homes that are now going to be on the hook for, if, if that particular townhome association fails, now we're on the hook for that as well as what we're, we're currently responsible for, for a regular Single Family Homeowners Association. So you're saying that we're out of luck?
If, if, if we get in the unusual situation where the association would not be maintaining those, you know, your, your drainage is tributary to those basins. So your, you know, the drainage from your, your development is draining into those basins, so you have, you know, some responsibility for those, you know, no matter what. If we didn't even create the special service area, because you're within that subdivision unit, you would have some responsibility for maintenance of those anyway. So if we, we had no, so if we have the situation we have today, and we had to litigate and compel maintenance of that, your single family would still be part of that because you're in that subdivision unit. So it wouldn't really make a difference from that standpoint.
Scott, just one more question for you. The, the, right now, the maintenance is primarily mowing, so annual, annual mowing of those detention ponds. Is there any anticipated build outs or any anticipated future maintenance costs that, that our homeowners should be aware of?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I mean, there is the underground storm sewer system that's involved in that. City, you know, maintains some of those components, but, you know, essentially, the main maintenance for the association is primarily mowing. So, you know, the, the storm drainage components themselves are typically maintained by the city.
And if there is an expansion in commercial or residential properties in that area, would, would there be any expected change to the scheduled maintenance for those detention ponds?
Well, if there was, I mean, there's only one property in the area that could develop that would be tributary potentially to one of those basins. If that should happen, you know, we, we and the association would have to talk about whether or not they can provide drainage into that basin, and if they do, presumably, they would have to contribute to the maintenance of that as well. So that would lower everybody's costs if that should happen, so, but that would be a speculative thing at this point, if, whether or not that would actually happen, and if they do, if they would want to use those basins.
So if there were to be expansion, an expansion, then the, the developer of that expansion would essentially be expected to contribute to any necessary increased maintenance?
Absolutely, yes. The developer and then the subsequent owners of that, if it's a, you know, residential subdivision, sold to single family or multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
What if it's commercial?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What if it's commercial? Because I think...
Same thing.
...properties.
Same thing. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address us on that?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion, second, to close the public hearing on the special service area number 67, the Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision, Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, three absent. Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Public hearing is closed. All right, then we will move to item number nine, which is an oath of office for probationary police officer Travis Kurtz. Chief Yule, you want to bring that up and ask the officer, you want to make some introductory remarks about him?
Travis Kurtz is a certified law enforcement officer who joined us after serving 10-plus years of law enforcement service with the Kendall County Sheriff's Office and the Sandwich Police Department predominantly. His law enforcement service includes an assignment as a task force investigator in Kendall County. Officer Kurtz is a graduate of Sandwich High School and has also attained an associate's of arts degree from Woburn Community College in 2003. He is currently assigned to the field training division in our police department. We're excited to have Travis join the department. I believe his law enforcement employment background will help make an immediate impact on our department.
Travis, you want to join me in the middle of this circle here, because we got TV cameras on, and we want to chew on good, you have to stand right there, Alderman Lehman, because that's one of the principal spots for the camera, so we got you shining there. You would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Travis B. Kurtz.
I Travis B. Kurtz.
Having been appointed.
Have you been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On April 4th, 2022.
On April 4th, 2022.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
And the city of Batavia.
And the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Dussel, we swear and affirm.
Dussel, we swear and affirm.
Have support the Constitution of the United States.
Have support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And have faithfully discharged the duties.
And have faithfully discharged the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, moving to item number 10, is the reappointment of Dennis Anderson as to the Board of Batavia Fire and Police Commissioners. As most of you know, Dennis Anderson served with great distinction with over a 30-year career with the Batavia Police Department, in which most, number of the years, he was the chief of police. And upon his retirement, after some removal from the law enforcement arena for a few years, I asked him if he would consider joining the Fire and Police Commission, which is the group that reviews and hires all new policemen and firemen into the city of Batavia. He concurred to that, and he's now completed his first term, and I'd like to ask for his reappointment or confirmation of my reappointment of him to another term as a member of the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Saron. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Thirteen, eleven, yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to item number 11, we are at a kind of a pivotal part of the year, we do this every year, we have an Arbor Day proclamation that the city council approves. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Alderman Beck if she would present the Arbor Day proclamation.
Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees reduce the erosion of our precious top oil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fire, and countless other wood products; and whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community; and whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal; and whereas, Batavia has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, here, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the city of Batavia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations on this 18th day of April, 2022. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey.
I want to make a motion for the approval.
I move reapprove. This proclamation is read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Lehman, for the approval of the Arbor Day proclamation. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Risotto.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion approved. When I understand that very well, the public works where Mr. Harrow is, and under his leadership, among the mentioning that discovered there, Arbor Day and planting trees is one of the roles, and so it's a responsibility to the public works department. Thank you, Mayor. Do you want to make some comments? I just wanted to very briefly acknowledge the efforts of our forester, Scott Haynes, and especially our administrative assistant in the Streets Division, Kathy Montanari. She'll be retiring in early May, and for years, she has spearheaded this Tree City USA application every year, and I'm proud to say that this marks the 25th year, executive year, that Batavia is a Tree City USA. I just wanted to make special thanks to both of those individuals.
Thank you for that, and I would like to, along those same lines, mention that I think he's going to be retiring because of some health issues, but our city arborist, Frank Sopp, who has been in that role for a long time, 40, 50 years, his family was the, kind of the early Batavia tree surgeons and cutters and whatever, he can remember back in the early 1950s when we had the Dutch elm disease, and over almost 4,000 trees were killed in Batavia by that dreaded disease. And from that event, he, his father and himself, he was a young man at that point, took part in a Batavia, the creation of the Batavia Tree Commission, of which their goal was, was to go out and double the number of trees in Batavia that had been killed by the Dutch elm disease, which was, the goal was to do about 6,000 new trees, and they've lost count, but he's relatively sure that we're probably 10,000 to 12,000 have been planted. And as you go around Batavia, you can see that our town is probably one of the most tree-friendly cities there is in the whole area, and most of them have continued to grow and prosper and be healthy. And so there's been a lot of hands in this whole thing for a lot, lot of times. There's a whole list of people, some night I'm going to put it together and come down and read, and most of them have passed away, but there was a lot of really deep-hearted people who wanted to get into this thing, because Batavia really did get taken really back by the trees, by that Dutch elm disease in the early 1950s, and we really have come back and made a strong statement. And over the years, the city councils have taken actions to encourage tree planting. At one point, we even passed an ordinance that every new house that's built has to have at least one new tree, hopefully more planted in its yard as part of this whole movement, and so that added to the whole thing. And then we started programs with the public school system where we distributed trees to each one of the schools, and the kids took them home and planted them, and there's a lot of stories about what resulted from that, I'll tell you that. There's a lot of homeowners that planted something, didn't realize what they were planning. We have a guy down at, he's no longer with us, but there's a house down at 214 South Prairie Street, by a gentleman by the name of Harold Hobruk. He had his kids at JB Nelson School, and they came home one day with a little limb that they had gotten as part of the tree planting, and they said, "Dad, can we plant this limb?" So as he told me, "What are you going to do?" So he went out in the front yard and planted the limb, and now if you get down there today, I'd invite you to go there, because there's, the house right now is being rebuilt, but the tree is there, and the tree now is, according to Harold before he died, the tree was three times taller than the house, and it's huge. I mean, it is one of the biggest trees on the east side of Batavia, but that's just one of the nice stories of what this whole thing has brought to our town and talked about. So I just, just wanted to add a few comments to what Gary had said, because this really is something that Batavia should take very deep pride in, because there's a lot of people that gave a lot of energy and time and, and money and everything else to help put this together, and we've got it here today, and we, we proudly have one of the best tree displays of any city in northern Illinois. So, all right, so much for Arbor Day. Okay, moving now, we're honored tonight to have Batavia Main Street, Beth Walker, our executive director, is here, and you want to give us some reports?
Sure, I'm going to give a quick update, can you guys hear me? I don't know. Before I introduce some of the boardwalk shop people from last year, the kiosk project we have is going, is on track, we're looking to start installing those kiosks at the start of May. The city has asked us to help decorate the Jersey barricades that are on River Street, and we were approached by a Girl Scout troop, and they're going to build planters to go on top of that, so looking forward to getting those up in the mid-May. Farm Dog Flowers, a former boardwalk shop owner from last year, they will be opening their brick and mortar location April 30th, and that'll be located at 231 West Wilson Street. The Batavia High School building trade students are going to be out on River Street on the, well, April 26th, and they're going to start building the shed. Then we have, we started work on replacing the decking at the boardwalk shops because of how slippery it was, so we are looking for volunteers who are a little handy to help with that project. And then we're also going to start looking into fundraising about $15,000, so we can afford 40 collapsible picnic tables, just because of the cost associated with renting those now. So that's something else that we're going to start working on. So before I invite the boardwalk shop people up, does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a sign up or something for the volunteers for down at the boardwalk doing the deck?
I had one for last weekend, but I will send another one out.
Okay.
And any results, how'd the egg hop turn out this?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Egg hop was, while it was chilly, it was a beautiful sunny day, we had great attendance. I think, you know, people were pretty happy with how people went around town. It was too chilly to have the petting zoo, so that was a little bit of a disappointment, but other than that, it was a really great day.
Uh, what was, sorry, what was the date for Farm Dog Flowers opening?
April 30th.
April 30th, okay.
Any other...
I'm going to invite up some of the tenants from last season's boardwalk shops to talk a little bit about their experience, and these, all four of these businesses are opening up, have opened up brick and mortar, are going to be open up, brick and mortar locations. I'll let them edit this.
Okay. If you give us your name, please, so we know who you are, and tell us what's the name of your business is, so we...
Hi, Melly Bernus, I own Pretty Pages. We just opened about a month ago up at 241 Wilson.
Hi, I'm Abby Estes, I opened Catalpa Manor, Tunnies, Wilson.
Hi, I'm Jo Cola Jacoby, I'm opening New Moon Vegan at 119 South Batavia, we're just building a kitchen first. Hi, I'm Abby Estes. I opened Catalpa Manor, Tunnies Wilson.
Hi, I'm Joe Cola Jacoby. I'm opening New Moon Vegan at 119 South Batavia. We're just building a kitchen first.
I'm Courtney Kinsler. I own Black Angel Companies, which consists of, Black Angel Designs was our shop on the boardwalk, and our shop is Urban Artisan at 27 South Third in Geneva.
Yeah. You could say something, just a summary of your time at the boardwalk shop.
Yeah. I was really nervous to open a business. Didn't think that I could do it. And the boardwalk really gave me courage to go find help. I found a lot at Wobanti, the Small Business Help Center, and then just throughout other businesses, and just talking to people in downtown Batavia. It's been really encouraging. So, it just opened last, well, yeah, two weeks ago. So, just at my first full week, and the IHOP was really awesome because it, like, jumping in there showed a lot of people that I was new in town, and they didn't know I was there. It was really, really great.
I had my business for about five or six years before the boardwalk we did. We started doing street festivals in Chicago, and then when the pandemic hit, we switched to vendor marketplaces. So, we had some retail ideas. We wanted to open a shop, but that's a big leap to take. So, the boardwalk and the weekends really made us, allowed us to try that out and know that we could be successful with it. So, Jamie, Beth, Bob, all did wonderful things, helping us all through it. And we just really appreciate the opportunity that let us take that next step.
So, previous to the boardwalk, I had been in business about three years. Consisted mostly of either selling online or going to handmade and vintage markets. So, the constant setup and takedown and hauling back and forth, I did not miss when I opened the boardwalk shops. It was nice to have a dedicated spot. I think that I well underestimated what the boardwalk shop would do for me and my family. The amount of support from the community and just the traffic that we received every weekend, I don't think I would have ever had an idea of how I could do business-wise if not for the boardwalk shops. So, thanks. I have to say that I don't think that this would work everywhere. I think Batavia is just one of those wonderful places where the community will rally against you or with you, and, and just wants to see you grow and support. And there were people who were, we saw every weekend at the boardwalk shops. And now, there's a handful of those exact people who are opening shops this year at the boardwalk. So, it's a neat little family to be a part of. And I never would have, in a million years, thought I'd be able to open a brick-and-mortar. But I can because of the boardwalk shops. So, thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking the city council and the city of Batavia for all the support we've all received. And I, too, I'd never imagined this possible. I actually had my virtual graduation ceremony for my master's degree a week before we opened. But like many, thanks to COVID, I had a great pivot, and I had to revisit my career. And I had this dream very close to my heart for decades of my life, since I was about 20 years old, and I'm in my mid-40s now. So, the support that I received through the boardwalk shop, I don't, I can't imagine another way to get to where I am right now without it. So, I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
I just wanted to say thanks to all of these ladies and everybody else from last season. So, I know pretty much everybody went down to the boardwalk shops at one point or another and supported these businesses. Make sure now that they've chosen to find homes in the Fox Valley area, but mostly in Batavia.
One out of three's not.
Yeah, you know, we're, there's a couple others that open in Batavia. But keep, you know, supporting them and patronizing them because they got their start here. They, they chose to take that next step right in our downtown with this risk project that we all supported. And they took that risk for them and their business, and as Mellie said, her family, and each of their families. And then, they became a family, and they're deeply embedded here in Batavia, even if they did open in Geneva, or even if next season we see somebody open Aurora or elsewhere. They're still part of the boardwalk family. Beth and Bob and I have talked about the benefits of the fact that Courtney did open in Geneva, the fact that now we have an advocate just up the river for this project and for our downtown to help send people back this way when they're shopping other communities and to keep coming back here. So, this project has, because of your guys' support, and because of the city, because of the community, because of Main Street putting all that support toward this one project at our downtown, it's growing exponentially, just business in general. We didn't just see businesses open right down the block from where the boardwalk shops are. We saw them open down on the avenue. We've seen, we're seeing them open all over in spots like Abby's, that I don't know if anybody in this room had ever been in that space before. But when we first toured it, it was an old apartment. And I don't know how somebody lived there because it wasn't very nice. So, for Abby to have that vision of this space that is on our main retail block, in our downtown, to turn it and transform it into something as stunning and beautiful as what she's turned it into, if you've been in there, you walked in, probably like all of us walked in, in awe of the magic that she created. You know, and then Pretty Pages and Mojo opening in that little space right under the dress shop and bringing more retail back into that corridor. And then, what happens after they just sit on that? Farm Dog moved in there. So, now we've got a corner, one of our busiest corners in downtown from vehicular traffic, that's adding retail to our downtown. So, just please continue to support these businesses, even now that they've launched from the boardwalk, and just get excited for the new businesses that are working to open up. So, thanks, guys. If you want to ask them all a million questions, go for it.
I don't want to ask any questions, but I do want to pay a word of tribute to Jamie, who just got through speaking because she was one of the real spearheaders of it. Bob Hanson, who's in the audience, he was another one. Alderman Malley, he was down there building every day, every weekend. Former Alderman Brown was down there with great regularity. And certainly, Beth Walker has picked up and carried on this whole thing. And what I'm very, very, as the mayor of Batavia, I'm very, very pleased of because, because you guys are there, I do get calls from people saying, gee, I'd like to come down to your town and see this thing. And, and I don't, sometimes they come and they don't tell me they're coming. But I am aware that we've just had three mayors from suburban Madison, Wisconsin, down here. And they were very interested in the types of stores and what was done and the designs of the building. And one of them called me back and had me on the phone for probably a good half hour, asking a whole bunch of questions about, you know, partnerships with other governments. And I told her we had been very blessed in Batavia to have the support of the Batavia High School Arts Department out there and helping build some of the buildings and framing the work and whatever. And so, she says, I'm writing all this down because these are all things we're going to take to. Then, I was told recently that we had three mayors from the southwest suburbs up here looking at what was going on. And I told them, why don't you call me and tell me you're coming? I'm taking it at lunch. But they were, they, they told me they were going to do some other stuff, so they didn't have that opportunity. But the one that I really ended up giving a tour of this thing to was, we have a newly-elected mayor after this past election a year ago of Algonquin, Illinois. And she called me and said, gee, I really am very interested in what you're doing in Batavia. Could I come down and you show? So, I did. And her name's Debbie Sofcze. And so, she and I have kind of become friends now as a result of this because she calls me with further requests for information. And they're getting ready to do something up there along these same lines using quote-unquote "the Batavia model", of which I think you guys are the stars of the model. So, be, be prepared to have somebody say, gee, I kind of saw this idea in Batavia, or I stole it from you, or whatever we're doing with this thing. But this is a real, very, very productive thing that's kind of given Batavia its only, own little niche on the, on the downtown redevelopment map that I think is really making a shine. So, I'm very pleased with all the efforts that came on. It really has come together extremely well, and we're getting the attention of all these neighbors that are coming in here looking to see, what did you do? So, and you guys are it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Beth, you want to say anything? Do you do anything more?
No, no more questions, Brett. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move then to item 13 on the agenda, which is ordinance 22-23, establishing a special service area number 67 for the Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision, Wind Energy Pass at Wagner Road.
Alderman Wolf? Thank you, Your Honor. This is the special service area that we had the discussion on earlier during the public hearing, set up as a backup special service area for the maintenance of the retention ponds and common areas there. And this would be initially set up, and no tax levy would be put on, it'd be at zero, $0.00 to initially put the SSA into place. And again, these are things that sometimes don't get done by the developers when they originally annex in or complete the development. They don't get done, so then we have to go back and do this again. And so, they, basically, they put that back on us to explain that to the public, why we have to do these. And it is just a backup. And it is really something that's important to have so we don't get into a situation where, say, a homeowners association fails, and then it drives down the value of the properties around it because of the fact that it doesn't get maintained. Or it gets left and it doesn't get maintained or doesn't get taken care of if it's a naturalized retention area, and then it ends up costing more money to get it fixed in the end. So, I think this is really a good thing. You know, nobody wants to talk about having an extra tax added to their, their neighborhood, but this is something that has to be done so that way we do have a way in the future to take care of those properties. I don't know if anybody has any questions or any further comments. Okay, if not, I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-23, establishing special service area number 67 for Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision, Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road.
Second? Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosado, for the approval of ordinance 22-23, establishing special service area number 67, Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision, Wind Energy Pass at Wagner Road. Any further discussions? Kirk, please call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Ordinance 22-23 is approved. Okay, moving to item 14, which is discussion of 2021 West Side Property Maintenance Contract Renewal with Shamrock Hardscapes and Restoration. Gary, you have this one?
I do, and I think, I just want to verify if online, there's also supposed to be the attorney for Shamrock online. I just want to make sure that he has the opportunity to speak when that time comes. He's online, okay.
I'm online, yes.
Thank you.
Can I be heard okay?
Yep.
This is Tim Cerny. I'm the attorney for Shamrock Hardscapes and Restoration, Inc. And I'm here tonight to talk about the contract dated April 5, 2021, landscaping contract between Shamrock and the city of Batavia, which had a one-year auto-renewal that required 60 days' notice to cancel. And my client, Shamrock, due to the, what is now a terminal illness to Stephen Bear, who was running the company, we ended up giving late notice of 45 days' notice if not to intent because the contract is impossible to perform due to the increased costs. The contract is still up for bid, and I believe, put it out, I'm sorry, it's still in effect, but the city's put it out for bid. But it's, we're seeking a mutual termination because of the cost. Fuel is up through the roof and was $2.73 at the time of the contract, from what I'm understanding from my client. Fertilizers up 486%. Labor costs have doubled, material costs are way up. And right now, the, the bond that was on in the first year is not in place. We'd like to terminate the contract mutually so we can avoid ongoing troubles. And as I said, this is out for bid. If we are unable to come to an arrangement along those lines, in order for my client to do the bid, we would ask that the purchase price be $105,000, which is what it would cost to do this work.
Thank you for those comments. I'll just add some further detail. Scott Haynes in his memo actually described in full detail kind of the background information. We are currently out to bid, given the circumstances, and we are expecting to open public bids on April 20. And at that point in time, you know, our attorney has advised us that at that point in time, we can, we can decide a course of action. Staff's recommendation right now is to not release Shamrock until after the bids are open on the 20th, and then we can have a formal recommendation after that date as to the next actions the city may take. I'm going to just step back now. Again, you heard some of the background, and it's in Scott's memo. So, instead of going through all this, I'll simply ask if there's questions. Our attorney is here tonight also to answer questions, if counsel has any.
I'm wondering if we should just set this for another hearing before the city council after the 20th of April, and I get a chance to see what the city's position is. I don't have Scott's memo, if that's something I should have.
All right, that's posted on our website. So, it'll be part of tonight's agenda. There'll be a link, a link on tonight's agenda that would, that provides the memo that I'm referring to. It's on the city's website.
Okay, I'll find that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would recommend we do the same. There's no, it's hard to make recommendations until we see the bid.
This item could be tabled, well, I have to defer, I don't know if it has to come to a council meeting or if it has, if it comes to the next committee meeting.
I think either one, wouldn't it?
Yeah, either way, you can't take action at the committee meeting, but if you want to table this to the next committee, the whole meeting, have that discussion then. And then, whatever you decide at that time, you can bring it to the next city council meeting. Or you just go off to the next city council meeting, have that discussion then. But it may, given the timing, it may make sense to do it at the next Cal meeting first, then do, take action at the first city council meeting in May.
So, the 26th, that'd be the first Cal meeting following the bid opening.
Yes.
I'm not sure if I heard all that. The 26th of April, there's what meeting?
We call it a Cal meeting, but it's a committee of the whole meeting. It's just an acronym that we use. So, the committee of the whole meetings are city council's workshop meetings. So, at a committee of the whole meeting is when council typically dives into deeper detail on particular issues. So, this could be appropriate to talk about on that evening. And then, it would return to city council, and I have my calendar for me. I think it's May 2nd, though, which would be the first Monday in May for official action. That's when it would be.
Is the Cal meeting something I could participate in?
Of course, yeah.
Okay. Is, is anybody able to tell me how to participate in that, or should I check with the council for the city or something along?
No, it'll be very similar to what you're doing tonight. It'll be a link, there will be a link and, link provided so that you can register via Zoom, or you're certainly welcome to come in person if you would like to do that as well.
Okay. All right, well, I'll calendar it for the 26th and, and then for the city council meeting on May 2.
Do we want to make a motion then, Gary, to put that timeframe into, into work?
Motion is to table it to the next Cal meeting.
Yeah, this is just a discussion, so it's not like we have to vote on this tonight. So, we just move that discussion to the next Cal meeting.
So, does, we, do we want to motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion then that we table this discussion on the 21, 2021 West Side Property Maintenance Contract and Renewal with Shamrock Hardscapes and Restorations, and we'll revisit that at the Cal meeting on April 26.
Second? Here we have a motion, second, to table the discussion on the, let me find it here, the 2021 West Side Property Maintenance Contract with Shamrock and Hardscapes and Restoration. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
So, Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 15, which is the administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just a few things. Public Works staff is working cooperatively with the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network to update the agency's operation plans. IPW Man, as it is known, now has almost 400 community members in the state of Illinois. And what IPW Man does is provide valuable mutual aid resources for stricken communities. For example, if a community is hit by a tornado, certainly, they may not have the local resources from a public works standpoint, you know, or the personnel in order to address all of the concerns that come from a situation like that. And IPW Man is, we provide mutual aid to one another. It really is a, a gold standard that Illinois has this kind of mutual network of help for neighboring communities. Drawings and contract documents have been received for the city's entrance signs, and staff will review the documents and prepare them for bid in the coming weeks. Our goal is to erect two entrance Our goal is to erect two entryway signs sometime later this summer. And Public Works is working to secure a contractor for removal of the crosswalk pavement striping at McKee and Batavia Avenue. Once a contractor is secured, final paperwork can be submitted to IDOT and removal work can commence. Plan Commission will be having their meeting on April 20th. There's a public hearing on the proposed Mocha Coffee Drive-Thru on Independence Drive, as well as continuing, continued hearing on a number of text amendments that have been proposed by staff. And plans for the Culver's Restaurant have been submitted for permit and are under review. And on April 26th, council meeting, we will have a number of items for discussion. These include annexation of properties in the area of Main Street and Evergreen Drive, continued discussion of text amendments for electronic changeable message signs, and a presentation of a proposal for a downtown study that was budgeted for this year. Also revised plans for the Bell Tire facility on McKee and Randall have been submitted and are under review. And that's what I have, unless anybody has any questions for me?
One question, maybe Scott might chime in on this too. There's two houses on Main Street in the 900 blocks that were abandoned for quite a while and now it looks like they're cleaning everything out around them. Is there any proposal or anything that came in? Because I know that that was originally supposed to be a townhouse development and I'm not sure what's going on there, so if we could.
Yeah, what we, what we, that was proposed as a townhouse development, but what we've heard lately is that the owner has changed their mind and are going to try and reuse those homes. So, you know, that's their current, you know, thought process on that is to, you know, clean them up, make them presentable. Obviously, we will need to inspect them and make sure that they are habitable homes and good condition if they elect to do that. But that's the latest we've heard. They have not, to my knowledge, contacted us directly about it at this point.
Okay, because that was going to be my next question was if they are going to try and reuse those and rent them, sell them, whatever, do we have any jurisdiction to inspect them?
We do.
Are they, they are in the city?
We have annexed those, yes, we have.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee reports, city services?
Nothing to report at this time, Your Honor.
You have nothing, okay. Community development?
We just have one thing tomorrow night, and I don't know if this is city services or community development. It's a stormwater easement out at Fermilab, discussion on that.
Governmental services?
Nothing to your report, Your Honor.
Public utilities?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. Do we have other business from the council? Okay, the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things I want to mention. We are having a very interesting year here in public safety specifically. And there's some things that aren't going real good. And I just want to publicly commend our police and fire departments for the jobs that they are doing because they're performing things that, at volumes that we've never seen before. And specifically, Chief Yule and I have had several conversations in his office. So far, in the past five months in the city of Batavia, we have experienced, either in the city or within a few feet of being in the city limits, six motor vehicle fatalities in the last five months. Starting with the school bus accident down on Hart Road, the car that hit the school bus. And then we had two multiple fatality accidents, one on Fabian Parkway, one on Kirk Road. And, you know, then we continue to have another one on South River Street. So we're up to six now. In many years, we don't have any. And I don't think the police department or myself or anybody else has any reason why this is all happening. It's just people are driving wilder and crazier, I think, and just flying around. And so, you know, I think I've asked Chief Yule to have the police department take some look at what we're doing here and maybe, you know, invoke some new enforcement standards on certain parts of the town or whatever. We don't know yet what we're doing, but they're, they're ready to try to, you know, encourage people to number one, slow down because speed seems to be the killer in most of these things. And, you know, just behavior driving. But that one is really, really coming back to be in our face this year. And we don't know why or whatever, but I just put the message out to all of our residents, please be careful when you're driving your car now because we're having a really bad year. We may be breaking the record here of, we may have already broken the record of how many fatalities we've had. So I don't know. Another thing that we've had happen, and this past weekend, it really seemed to blow up in certainly my face as the mayor. We have a lot of people coming to Batavia that, for whatever reason, we can't, they're not our residents, but they're pulling in here in cars and they're getting out and they're staging themselves at various prominent locations. And they're asking people to give them money. And they're holding up signs saying, would you give me money to support my two babies? Or my baby, and some of them have brought in blankets and put them along Fabian Parkway or Randall Road, and they bring a baby out and let the baby crawl around the blanket and say, this baby needs support. And there's a lot of good-hearted people in town that are doing this. I don't know if we need to take a look at our solicitation ordinances or beggars ordinances or what, but it's been pretty intense this past weekend. I had to get the Batavia Police Department involved in it because I'm standing out in Target just buying something at the counter and this resident comes running in the store and he comes up to me and I'm paying my money to get, and he says, Jeff, you got to come out here and see what's happening in the parking lot right now. So I bought my item and then I left and I go out with him. And here's this group of folks and they're down by the McKee entrance to the Target parking lot there by the Chick-fil-A. And they're standing there and this woman has this baby bassinet. I guess I would describe it around her neck. And she's acting like she's got a baby inside this bassinet. So this guy says to me, I, my heart came out to me and he says, I thought I'd stop and give these people some money. So he says, I stop and I get out and so I say to this lady, can I see the baby? And she says, oh, it's asleep. And then he saw something move and it didn't look like it was a baby inside the bassinet. So he said, he bent over and looked and there wasn't no baby in there. It was a doll that the woman had in her, in her thing. So he, you know, so I, 911 this, I guess I didn't, I called down here and they came out and we had a conversation about this. And they said, well, they better leave. And so we ran some checks on the car they were in and found out they were from DuPage County. Don't seem to have any Batavia connection whatsoever. Then we find out that there were two other members of the team. One was over at Wilson and Randall, standing there with a similar, just had a sign saying it was trying to need money for two babies. And then there was another one down the street by the Walmart that was looking for money for three babies. And I'm not sure what we got going here, but this, you know, and we got good-hearted people that are trying to, if you need money, and, you know, I've, I said to these folks, I said, you know, we have organizations in this town that if you really are in problems, you call us and I'll connect you. Oh, no, we want to do it by ourselves. And so, I don't know. So this has been going, I, last weekend was quite a to-do. Batavia Police Department performed very admirably on it. They were very sensitive about trying, not telling everybody, well, you got to get out of here immediately. But they said, you know, it looks like this is not being handled the right way, blah, blah, blah. So I just want to alert you to this, that we may be coming back here and having some conversations about, you know, how much solicitation that we'll allow and in what format we'll allow you to do it. Because this is getting to be kind of crazy here with this whole thing. The other thing I wanted to talk about just very quickly is, is that I've been approached by Kane County and they've got some folks that are trying to sell Kane County Lake Michigan water. And they would like to have their, bring the Lake Michigan water into the tri-cities. As we would be the center part of the county. So I've told the folks at Kane County, I said, I don't think Batavia is probably interested in this. We've got really a great water system now that we've spent multiple millions of dollars on. We're sitting out on top of the Newark Aquifer out at Mill Creek and, you know. So they keep pushing it. I've talked to Geneva, St. Charles, and nobody's made a final decision, but they've all been approached by this. I had Gary Holm and our water superintendent come up to my office the other day with Laura and we talked to them at great length about it. They don't think it's a good idea. And if those guys don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's a good idea. But I think what I'd like to do is ask Gary, is a water guy, if they would come back down here some committee meeting night and maybe just give you, the city council, your view on this Lake Michigan water thing. Because there's, there's a lot of different ideas on this thing. But, you know, they're looking for each city to give them four, five, six million dollars just to bring the pipe in. And I don't think we need it. I mean, I think from what I'm hearing from the water department, we're in really good shape here. And, you know, the catalyst of this thing has been Yorkville, Oswego, and Montgomery. They've signed on to raise money to go out and do this, as has several cities, including Joliet and Will County. And so I don't know if there's a big movement on this or not, but that's one that I think I need to educate the council on as to all this stuff that's going on. Then several of you talked to me last week because when you turned on the TV news on channel, I think it was Channel 7, there was an announcement on the TV news that the city of St. Charles and the city of Batavia were looking at outlawing all bags in your business district and were going to charge people for their bags. And, or whatever we're doing, and then creating some kind of a bag tax. And I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but I went last week to the Batavia Environmental Commission meeting, sat there for the whole meeting, had a very, very nice time. And I told the folks there, because they had, they admitted they had had some conversation with St. Charles. And I said, well, I don't know if this is good or bad, but, you know, before we put this on Channel 7, I got 14 men and women sitting in the room down here every two, first and third Mondays of the month. And they need to know what we're talking about here. I mean, you know, you don't put this out for millions of people in the Chicago area to hear about and you guys don't even know about it, as far as I know. So then a couple of you have contacted me and said, I have been contacting my residents, what's this all about? So I suggested to the Environmental Commission last Wednesday night, I guess it was, you folks need to put together a plan. I'm not saying this is good or bad, but you need to come down here and share this with the decision makers who run this town. This is a strong city council. They're fair-minded, they're good, but they need to understand what it is you're out there telling people on Channel 7 that Batavia and St. Charles are doing. So it was kind of funny because supposedly they were going to use home rule power to do this. And Geneva doesn't have home rule power. So of course Mayor Burns is up there making jokes about how he's going to have a cheaper city to buy things in because you won't get dinged for the bag and all this good stuff. He was being funny about it. But St. Charles, I think, has some of the same wonderments about this that we do. So I just wanted to let you know, I'm trying to get you some more stuff for committee of the whole meetings. We're going to talk about Lake Michigan water and we're going to talk about bags about the Environmental Commission. And they're very timely discussions and they need to be talked about. And in the meantime, I'm sure Chief Yule and I and his staff will be talking over the next few days about this whole solicitation thing. And I don't want Batavia to come across looking, oh, we won't let anybody come in here and ask for help. That's not what this is all about. But when I see stuff like I saw this weekend with these dolls that were being presented as live babies in people's packets and stuff, that's, we've gone too far, in my opinion, and we need to know what's going on here. And as a city, that's our job and we should have a command of what's happening. So I just wanted all of you to hear it right here and now from me as to, you know, the latest this week. And we've had quite a, quite a full house of, you know, nothing really bad, but it's stuff that you need to know about. So be ready, we got some more stuff to talk to you about. That's the mayor's report for this week. Okay, I guess we want to move to 19, which is a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel. So move. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay for the council of manner executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.